All right, let's call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for Republican votes.
To the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Can you change this to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda by Bird. Second by Seaverston, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't have any presentations. On to public comments. Anyone like to speak under public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, everybody. Tom Wolf, Scott County Commissioner. Just a couple of things here tonight. The 91, or not 91, 2 in services. I just got a comment last night from somebody. It's next week, it's Tom saying they thought that was a little bit more dangerous nowadays with all the developing coming on. So I'm going to talk to our engineer and take a look at that. Another thing, I don't know if a lot of you are on Facebook or not, but there's this program, this refugee program. I don't think we saw it on Facebook. It's where counties can vote on accepting them or not. Donald Trump, the president, gave us the authority. And now a federal judge last week said he didn't have the right to do that. So it's kind of in the courts now. But on February 4th, we're going to have someone from Health and Human Services from the state come to the boardroom. We're going to try to televise it and get all the questions and answers out about who's coming, who they are, where they're coming from. I think the biggest problem is the work they use refugees in. Some people think that means they're coming from some place that they have no jobs and they're coming here to take all they can. I believe from what I've seen, that's the farthest thing from the truth. So I think it's actually people who, doctors, you know, people in IT. Maybe Josh, you know that.
Yeah, I was going to say caregivers, even assistance of buildings, all that stuff. We're dependent on that.
That we're dependent on, and we actually need those people. And, you know, one stat I saw that said these refugees that come here actually have a 50% better chance of becoming a millionaire than somebody born here. So because they've come from such poor countries that they, they come here and they work to get ahead. So that'll be on February 4th. That's going to be at 8 o'clock at the Scott County Boardroom. And just a reminder that next Monday, the 27th, we're starting at 6:00, like the presentation and the talk, but we're going to have like a light lunch there at 5:30. So if everyone can get there a little bit earlier and do a little meet and greeting and stuff, that'd be great. So I think it'll be a good night.
Excellent.
So, all right? Thank you.
Good evening, council. Bryce Schenke, I'm here to provide you a Chamber of Commerce update. So we had some change in our board members. For president, it's now going to be Josh Malwitz. So he's taking over as president after Don has served a couple of years and did a great job there. Mario from the Garage Door Doctors and then myself have also been added to the board for the Chamber of Commerce. Brian Durham had stepped down from the board. In our first meeting for the year, we did do a little bit different membership structure. So as far as our fees for membership, it stayed the same for nonprofits. Increase to 250 for the standard membership and 290 for the enhanced. Some great things that are coming up this year is, one, we're partnering with the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce and utilizing the size of their chamber and some of the events that they're putting on to have our businesses be able to attend that at a reduced rate. So instead of paying a non-member rate for development things and different activities that they put on, we won't be charged the member rate, but we'll definitely get a great discount on that. So that's a great thing for our members as well to dip into that. We have a scholarship committee and it's an area of focus this year in 2020. There's more details to come on that, but really we'll see some more involvement on who's involved with that committee and what those scholarships will look like. Some other goals this year is really focusing on how as a chamber that we can provide more value to our businesses. And some things that we'll be doing to help find that out is what we have a couple of new ambassadors, including myself, that will be reaching out to all chamber members soon to have one-on-one meetings and really deep dive things that we're doing within the chamber and how we can be more effective in providing more value. I think that's actually, and then as far as 2020 events go, we do have somebody on staff now that's helping us coordinate with events. So that will be a really nice value-added piece to the board to focus on things that we need to and have somebody kind of look after the events and the details of that. With that, we'll be doing the golf tournament again this year as usual. And Ladies Night Out will also be an upcoming event in April. And we may see some potential changes with that structure and how we might bring it more inviting to the whole community rather than just females. So does anybody have any questions for me? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Olson and I am a candidate for Senate District 20. And I've been trying to get around the whole Senate district and visiting the city and township council meetings. And I actually was able to get up to Scott County and Rice County and La Sura County Board of Commissioners meetings as well. My hope is that I can convince people that I'm the right candidate for the election this year in November. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. Originally from Minneapolis, I went to Washburn High School, graduated in 1986 and was lucky enough to get a nomination to the U.S. Naval Academy. So I went off to Annapolis. I finished there, graduated in May of 1990. I spent the following 21 years on active duty as an intelligence officer in the Navy. Had the opportunity to travel all over the world, service in Europe and Western Pacific and even off of Somalia and Iraq and everything else, Afghanistan as well. I came back home in 2011. Retired mostly because my dad was diagnosed at the mid-stages of Alzheimer's. So I spent the next number of years with him on his journey until he passed away in early 2017. And I realized at that point, as I was turning 50, that, you know, I'd spent my entire adult life doing service and that I really missed that. And I realized that, I think, you know, I thought public office, public service was the way to go for me, but I also realized that as a career intel officer, I really didn't know anything about public policy. Which I just had the opportunity to sit through at your economic development meeting. So I used my post-9/11 GI Bill and I went through the Humphrey School. I got a master in public affairs there and I came out of that program truly enthused about public service. And then it was just a matter of figuring out where and when to serve. What's concerned me as I've, you know, returned back home to Minnesota is where the public, where we are today in a partisan divide. And that, as a career military officer, that really kind of terrifies me frankly. I'd like to use my 25 years of leadership experience in the military and the last eight years teaching college classes at both Metropolitan State University and their School of Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice and also at Carlton College and their Political Science Department. And the fact that I've spent a lot of time on nonprofit boards, typically leading those boards for veteran issues and also environmental issues to try and heal this partisan divide that we have. I think people have stopped listening to each other and truly trying to understand our differing viewpoints. And my hope is, is that I can convince everybody that I'm the right person to try and represent our district up in the Minnesota Senate. So that's me. I don't know if anybody has any questions or not. Is it okay if I pass my card around to everybody? Is that okay?
Does anyone have any questions?
Happy to answer.
I actually live across the street from Washburn, so I Oh, you do? I can't vote for you.
But you can send your cash.
Cash will work.
95?
Nice to see you.
So much, appreciate it.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Let's say you're fortunate enough to get elected and you're up there. Obviously, as a freshman, you don't have any power yet. You've got to listen to your leadership. How do you?
Sort of.
I agree. I mean, I would push as hard as I could. However, I would imagine that would quickly get you blackballed a little bit and not have a lot of say in committees and different things. So how do you push back against those in your own party perhaps that you might disagree with, that you maybe see that the other side of the aisle has other ideas?
Yeah.
How do you handle that?
So that's a great question. And I actually attended today the U.S. Global Leadership Coalition luncheon. Has anybody ever heard of that? No, if you've ever heard of that. It's basically 30,000 people who are retired veterans and foreign service officers and whatnot who've gotten together on a national basis. That includes over 200 flag and general officers at the three and four star level, not to mention all the other one and two-star generals and generals. And the idea is we're trying to address a lot of these issues of using all the tools of national power to address our international challenges rather than just just the military. And the keynote speaker today was actually Congressman Phillips. And he's a freshman out of Congressional District 3. And he specifically talked about the fact that he has found the leadership on both Democratic and Republican side in Congress to be failing the American people because they basically exacerbate the divide by taking the freshmen from both parties and running them off in different directions and trying to inculcate them in their own little, you know, mind game. And that, to me, is absolutely unacceptable as a military officer. We are all Americans. In this case, we are all Minnesotans. And in my case, I'm hoping that we all look at each other as members of Senate District 20. So the goal needs to be, how do we bridge that divide? Like if you go to the Senate today, you know, in the Senate building, it's divided by Democrats in one area and Republicans in another. Well, that's ridiculous. It should be based on, you know, Senate District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 because we all have to work together. We all have to solve problems together. So that'd be one of the very first things that I would want to push back against whoever gives a block or somebody else in the Senate. Because we have to remember that we're all Minnesotans. When I left home in 86, if you'd asked any Minnesotan, hey, describe a Minnesotan, right? We probably always said, well, we're a bunch of fiscal conservatives and social liberals. We don't want to see anybody down on their luck and we're willing to give them a hand up, but we want to do it in a very responsible way with the taxpayer dollars if you don't waste taxpayer dollars. Do your job. No, you don't. So that's my mindset, right? That's what Minnesota is supposed to be about. I mean, I got a nomination from Martin O'Leary Sabo, who was the fifth district rep. But I went to grade school at Borough Elementary with Senator Dave Dernberger's kids. Now Sabo was a Democrat and Dernberger was a Republican. If you put the two of them together, and you didn't have a scorecard, you might have difficulty figuring out which one was with which party, right? And that, so again, that's my mindset. We've got to get back to a point where it's not an R or a D after your name, it's the fact that, hey, we're all Minnesotans, we've got to solve these problems because we have serious challenges moving forward. Thank you very much. Yeah.
So John, what's your position on local authority?
Local control.
Local control. Because what tends to happen and has happened, seems to be happening increasingly at the state legislature is there's a consistent movement to serve local control, local authority, and local discretion related to items where there will be one or two bad apples and so we'll come up with a blanket solution that has a negative impact on the majority because there was a couple of bad performers. Or somebody doesn't like a local decision and so they use their access to people and other, and we're going to solve it. We're going to reverse it at the higher, we're going to reverse a local issue at the state level. What is your position on that and how would you approach that if you were elected?
So amazingly enough, I've been talking to some of the township councils and one of the things that they are angry about is the fact that the cities keep annexing their properties and not giving them back the tax base that they have now lost, right? Because they have very little tax base compared to what the cities and towns have. So everybody wants to maintain local control. And I think that makes good sense. I mean, democracy is about driving control down to the lowest possible level, right? So I have no issue with that and I don't know what the solution is, I'll be honest with you. I mean, it's only a few months into this campaign, you know, learning a lot about policy. But I am totally in favor of pushing control down to the local level and I would fight for that. I mean frankly, that's where I'm hearing, I'm hearing that across the entire district. People want to have control of their local communities.
Can I just add, when it makes sense? I mean, because there are certain things where we as cities make stupid decisions that create a patchwork of nonsense that then makes it impossible for a state to run effectively.
As long as you're not like creating some sort of discriminatory practice, you know, that kind of thing?
Like less equal.
Yes. So that, I mean, that's obvious, right? But yes, with it. But yes, local control for things like development, working with the county and whatnot.
Are you giving it for all the unfunded mandates?
I would like to. So one of the things I will tell you, if I see with the La Sura County Board of Commissioners, the first thing they said to me is the state has been promising us year after year after year, funding for transportation needs and it never shows up. That was the first thing they told me, I'm La Sura County Board. So I don't know if that's the same thing for the system. Same thing? Yeah, well, there you go. That's part of my mission, right there.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Anyone else care to speak under public comment? Come once, twice, all right. Public comment is closed. Consent agenda. Anyone have anything they wanted to add questions on or something they wanted to poll in general?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Bird.
Second.
Second by Seaverston. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass this floor on. Okay. We have no public hearings tonight, so on to general business. The police department addition.
We clap now?
What if we want to boo? Can we boo?
Of course.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Wait, didn't we just pass something on consent that was pro-police?
Of course. Pro-officer.
Pro-officer, I'm sorry.
Not pro-chief, unfortunately. Kind of party? When I'm sitting in the median, I want to be able to see.
I drive Josh's, so I'm going to be smart.
So we'll give that a second to warm up. So tonight we'll do introductions while we're here. Council may remember Todd LeVole from Leeway Daily, project manager for our police department, whatever it ends up being at the end of the day. He's, will be here tonight. I'll start with some of the background on the project and some of the number of aspects. I'll have Todd though actually walk you through the plans since he's really the expert on that. Chief, of course, is here available to provide any additional comment as it relates to the operational aspects. So tonight what we're doing is we're reviewing the plans, design plans for the addition to City Hall. What we're really looking to try and achieve is approve the design for the addition. Authorize Todd to go out and finalize plans and specifications as they would be approved by the design team and then authorize going out for bids. So for other individuals in the audience, interview audience, I'll quickly run through some of the background again because it's been a while since we've done that. So the history of the Police Department building. The Police Department is currently located in a 102-year-old building that was originally a one-room schoolhouse. Through its life, it was used as a school until the mid-1950s until Lakeville Independent School District absorbed it. It served as Elko City Hall and the Elko Post Office following that up until more recent times. And once the city consolidated in 2007, all of the city hall operations were moved over to this building. The post office remained in operation for a short period of time before it moved to its current location out on Marketplace Boulevard. At that time, the Police Department was actually operating out of leased space over in the Newton Circle Industrial Park there, just next to Niemeyer's. Space over there wasn't great space, but it had an indoor garage. And we felt that we could provide equivalent space for relatively cheap dollar amount. So what we did is we basically constructed walls within the existing facility. We literally built walls straight onto the floor, didn't care whether it was carpet, wood, whatever, just slapped up walls to create essentially this portion of the space that's there now. What that did is while it was still substandard, it was better than the lease space they were in and for the $16,000 it cost us to slap up those few walls, we recovered the cost in less than a year in lease savings. So this was intended to be an interim solution. And as we talked about before, in 2007, interim wasn't expected to be a long period of time. The projected population by 2020 was supposed to be 13,000. Renee, what's our current population? 4,700. The projected population by 2030 was supposed to be 20,000. We'd built 140 homes in the previous year. We built two last year. We'll be picking up, but just for perspective, we've been averaging about 15 or so a year for the last several years. Interim was not assumed to be long-term. Move forward to 2012. Well, we had four single-family homes built in the previous year. We had 49 single-family homes that had been built since 2007. The impact of the recession was still continuing to be felt in 2012. We were still coming out of that recession and now we're finally starting to see that pickup from residential development in spades, but it's finally getting to us. And the interim now appeared to be longer. We were assuming that, well, this could be a decade or more before we start getting to where we thought we were going to be in our previous assumptions and that the Police Department might have to be there 10, maybe 15 years. So we started talking about phased renovation of the Police Department because, one, we needed a longer-term interim strategy. We need to lower costs, something lower cost than new construction. Some of the same issues we're looking at today. We couldn't, didn't feel we could afford to build new construction. The Police Department, it was, we were having this discussion consisted of two people, Chief Steve and Craig, Officer Craig, right? So there was a lot of, it was going to be a long time before we needed a large facility. We needed something that not require the acquisition of land because that was an additional cost, would address the deferred maintenance issues with the existing building and would provide flexibility to push out new construction until, one, we needed the larger space that we would build. Because you don't build for the next 10 years, you build for the next 30. That's a lot of space with a lot of elbow room for the timeframe we're talking about. And the community tax base had grown proportionately. This was, to a very large degree, the cost-effective solution, not necessarily the highest value, but it was the way that we could get something that would get us by for the near term. Again, we're still talking interim. There is going to be four phases to it. The first one was to make the police station handicapped accessible. We basically rebuilt the front. At the time, the Police Department had the original stoop from the building, which the steps weren't even, meaning they had different rise and runs on them. It was pulling away from the building. It wasn't in the best shape. I believe the handrails were rusting out. It was in terrible condition and it definitely wasn't handicapped accessible based on current standards. Two is to construct a police garage. When the Police Department initially moved in there, we were using the Church Street Building, the garage in there, which was the original fire department and is now currently being used by ambulance. They stored the squads over there. So when you came to work, you had to go get the squad, drive it over to the Police Department, go in the Police Department, get all your gear, put it in the car, get in the car, and at the end of the shift, you had to do the exact same thing in reverse. Phase three, we needed to tuck point the exterior of the building. Oh, and the parking lot was a soupy gravelly mess in weather. We needed to tuck point the exterior of the building. We don't know that had ever been done since the current structure had been in place. So we're starting to see deterioration of the exterior of the building. Other than, I think, a re-roof in 2006, '07, somewhere in that timeframe, I don't know that there had been any significant investment into that building in the previous several decades. And then phase four was to basically remodel the interior, bring it up to standards. And the remodel we were talking about at that point was a limited remodel. Again, we're talking an interim solution. We were making investment for 10, maybe 15 years. The total cost that was estimated at the time was 325. We spent $225,000 on the first three phases of the project. So the current building status. Well, one, we did build the garage, but if you look at the building, you can see that it's a wonderful workplace up to current standards for professional law enforcement purposes. Just a little bit. It's a dump. Our Police Department has worked out of there because they recognize the fiscal constraints of the community, but there are issues with the site. Not only working conditions, we have mold in the building, which has been identified. We currently have interim solutions in place, but they will not work. So if we did nothing and the Police Department continued to work there, we would have to deal with those issues at a minimum. There are some structural issues with the building that need to be addressed. If we did nothing else, we would still have to make an investment to address those structural issues with the building. Are they, is the building throwaway? No, but these are things that need to be done. It's deferred items of the building that have just not been done over the last, previous decades. So we get to today. Our projected population by 2030 is now 8,600? Our projected population by 2040 is above 900? The impact of the recession is still being felt. We're just starting to see that pickup to where we were pre-recession with regards to level of development, development interest. Interim is significantly longer at this point. I would call it more semi-permanent. So we decided to take a step back. So we put a hold on the renovation. We wanted to review the scope and nature of what we're trying to do because the floor plan that we developed was developed back in 2010 under the assumptions at that time. We were already a decade after, almost a decade after the plan was supposed to be done and we hadn't implemented it fully yet. So we felt we needed to take a step back. Two, the post office, when we developed it, was still there. So we had developed a floor plan, working around the post office in that space. Now we had the ability to potentially clean out the whole interior of the site and basically start with a fresh start, demolish it wall-to-wall and have open space. The understanding of the needs of the department had changed. So we were dealing with a department and a design that had been developed with two chiefs back. The size of the department, the level of expertise within the department, the breadth of experience within the department, and quite honestly, experience using the facility changed. So we needed to reevaluate the design. And in that interim decade, the structure had continued to deteriorate. So we wanted to seek to maximize use of the structure for the Police Department and overall usable life of the existing structure. We wanted to examine the project with emphasis on greatest value versus just simply lowest cost. As we move forward, we took a look at renovating within the existing footprint. This was the plan, conceptual plan. We had retained the services of Leeway Daily. They helped us come up with a plan. And we went out and we got estimates based on that plan before we went to construction design. The estimated cost of the project was 1.2 to 1.6 million dollars. So, one, the level of renovation that we're doing, which is now semi-permanent, became more expensive, plus costs have escalated, especially in the current construction market. What we found is that the estimators and the architects kind of said, hmm, the bubble of the cost of renovation, which historically had been cheaper, and the cost of new, those bubbles are starting to merge. You might actually want to take a look at new construction. So we approached the council and asked the council about taking a look at possibly putting an addition on City Hall. Previously, that had been dismissed because of the significantly, significant increase in cost. So we took a look at it. Some of the reasons why is it'd be less site constraints, there are operational efficiencies. We have a city campus, everything's centralized in one building, it's easier for the public. We established a municipal campus. And we retained Leeway Daily, expanded the scope of services to take a quick look at what that, what that would look like. Now, this is very high level. It wasn't even at the same level of detail of the work we'd done at the previous site. And they basically said, well, you could build something somewhere between 500, you know, 5,500, 6,000 square feet that would be able to meet your needs for the department. So when we looked at that, we needed to evaluate the alternatives. By the way, that cost of that project was somewhere between 1.9 and 2.8 million dollars. We took a look at project cost, the lifespan. So if you look at the annualized cost, if you get more life out of it, the cost may be appropriate. The potential for reuse of each building, so there may be a point at which whatever's in there gets moved someplace else, grows out of it and gets reused. Department operations, basic, and return of, return on existing improvements. Because we had made investments already over on the existing location. And also the long-term impact on future operations for city buildings. We basically were taking a value approach as to simply what's the lowest cost. When we did that analysis for the council, the assumption was is that there might, there would be a clear indication. And what we actually found is it was relative. the assumption was is that there might, there would be a clear indication. And what we actually found is it was relative.
Relative to the cost, relative to the lifespan, you pay more, you get more. And so it became a value judgment and an identification of what is affordable for the council.
You might wanna buy the F-three-fifty because it might provide, you know, because that might be the, the best, but you might only be able to afford the F-one-fifty. However, looking at other factors, the F-three-fifty might make the most sense. And those are the policy decisions council needed to make. So we took a look at renovating within the existing footprint. Cost was estimated to be one point two to one point six million dollars. Typo there. Uh, the pros, it is the lowest-cost option, anticipated to meet the police department needs for thirteen police officers. Well, when we first started looking at this and we only had two or three police officers, that provided a substantial amount of growth. We're already halfway through that growth cycle, over halfway with our current staffing in the police department. Possible community space uh and senior center reuse of the facility in the future. And it uses the current investment um in handicap accessibility, tuck pointing, garage, et cetera. The cons, there's more risk in renovating the building. Anybody that's done a home improvement project on an old house, the same types of risks still apply. There's also a rule of thumb in renovation that if the cost of renovating is sixty percent of the cost of new building, um, you should be taking a look at possibly building new because of the advantages of the new space. And there is no room for expansion on the site. So it's a site constraint. We have parking for the ball field to the north. We have the physical limitations of the ball field, the playground, and the well to the south. You have the parking lot to the east. So you really don't have the ability. So what you build, it would be that size for the police department. You couldn't expand it. Once they outgrew it, they would have to go someplace else. So you would have to build a new building. The addition to City Hall, well, the cost is est, was estimated to be between one point nine and two point eight million dollars. Well, the pros, it would meet the space needs for up to twenty-two police officers. So you're looking at being able to get longer life out of it. Um, new construction is less risky than renovation. It allows the PD to be used for storage and possibly as a community room, senior center. So if you remodeled it for the police department, if you, you'd only have to remodel the building once. You'd remodel it to its final use. You wouldn't have to pay for remodeling it again. So you still had the ability to do that, and you could use it for storage in the interim if it's empty. It allows uh the addition of nearly a thousand square feet, larger than the current PD. So you'd have elbow room and flexibility. You could design it to be a police department where we would be existing within, working within an existing footprint and trying to create a police department within it. And so there's some efficiencies and operational benefits of being able to start with a totally clean slate. There'd be a positive impact on pos, on operations. Talked a little bit about that. There'd be greater community visibility, greater access, convenience to the citizens of the PD. There'd be operational advantages. Um, they would have a front desk that they could come to. Steph would be there and tell that we have um a front desk person back there, which would be down the road quite some time. Uh, you'd have shared use of facilities. Um, it'd be more easier to find, greater visibility for the police department than they currently have in their, their current location, and so on and so forth. Um, the roof here, uh, the additional space, this is a smaller item, but it is a fringe benefit. Could be designed, we're still doing the financial analysis on that, to include solar panels like we did at Public Works. We did look at doing it here previously, but the existing building doesn't structurally provide us with that capability. The new construction probably will. And reuse of the space should the PD move. So we're doing tilt-up construction. It's open inside. It's easy to rework. Um, you don't have the same types of constraints that you have in the type of construction that the existing building is. And there'd be still some potential expansion for the police department or for City Hall. So hypothetically, at some point in the future, the PD needed to grow. PD could expand into what's now administration. Administration could go someplace else, vice versa. Same with the fire department. So it gives you a little bit greater flexibility within the existing structure. The cons, it's more costly. There's no ups and downs about it. It's a more costly option. Uh, reduces the space for city events such as fire rescue days and annual recycling day because we wouldn't have access to the full parking lot in the back. We've, we've looked at this operational in the meantime, and we think the actual impact of that is actually fairly limited um overall. Um, but it would be have a, some limited impact. Um, site parking would be reduced with the anticipated increased demand for space. So we'd be taking out eleven or twelve spots from what we have. There are places that we will replace some of that. Um, but we, we just don't have, there'll be building where there's parking now. There's no way around that. And the salt shed may need to be moved in the future depending upon the growth of City Hall, but that's something that we can do. Salt shed itself has a defined lifespan. And at some point, we're gonna have to replace it, expand it, or recover it anyways. And we're probably, lifespan on salt shed, Corey?
Twenty years.
Twenty years. So we built that back in two thousand and eight.
Eight.
So we're well into that lifespan. So by the time we're looking for it, we may be moving in anyways. Out to the Public Works facility. And so the city council had discussed these two options and made a value decision um that we should be pursuing the addition to City Hall. So we worked with Leo A. Daley over the last few months to pull together a design um for the project. And I'm gonna ask Todd actually to come up and walk through uh the design elements and basically walk you through the police department.
Tough act to follow on that narrative. John's charisma too. Um, so this is uh just looking at the, the exterior of the building. Can I point with this thing here?
Help, please, use this here.
Perfect. I like pointers. Um, so this is the backside of the garage with the existing um garage doors for the fire department. Uh, the new addition on the backside. Uh, we're maintaining an access to the back uh of the fire station through this door right here. Uh, and again, the new, new facility on the back. Um, looking from the other corner, uh, this is the existing City Hall side. Uh, the new addition would be here again, four new stall, uh, garages uh outside, out on the backside.
So Todd, one of the questions that I would expect a councilperson to ask is, is it going to match the existing building or how close will it match?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're um duplicating the uh precast panels here. Uh, same, same color, same texture. Um, there will be a slight variation because it's new versus old. But uh, we're, we're trying to replicate that, use the same manufacturer. Um, again, some of the interior or the exterior um images. Um, and again, here, the four new garage stalls um with the two existing fire, fire station um drive-through or um openings here. Um, front, front of the building, uh, staying exactly the same. And then uh the two sides of the building are just adding on, on to that, so. Um, from a floor plan standpoint, I just wanted to walk through the building. Uh, right now, we're in the council chambers. Um, right there. Uh, so basically what we're doing is creating a new public lobby right off the back of the building here. And this, this public lobby space, uh, did we have another?
Be launched by.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the public lobby space here is a secure public lobby, um, which has um bullet-resistant um uh materials built into the, the perimeter of this for safety for the officers and for any administrative staff at that location. Uh, we'll have a new window here, bullet-resistant again for safety. Uh, one of the things that is really nice about this opt, or this uh design too, is that we can, the officers can bring in uh people from either um, um witnesses or people uh that wanna talk to a police officer. And they can use this soft interview room, which allows them not to have to enter into the back, back of the building. And again, that's for safety reasons.
So the soft interview room by comparison to when we talked about the hard interview room has more of a feel of um closer to a conference room or living room type feel. It's intended to make the individuals who are there feel comfortable, easily accessible. These aren't where you bring the bad.
Yeah. Good question. Yeah. So I assume that that's the only entrance for the public. Are the office hours the same at the police station as they are at City Hall? Does that vary ever?
We're twenty-four-seven.
Because, I mean, if, if we needed to get to the PD and City Hall's closed at four-thirty or whatever, the office hours are is.
What's nice is at the front, that lobby will now, the doors will be reversed. So you'll be able to go in to City Hall just to the front. There'll be a phone there twenty-four-seven. They can pick up a phone, no dial, no nothing, straight to us. We don't have that right now. And so then if an officer is working in the PD, they'll be able to walk right out and bring him in. Where we just don't have it. You can get out in the cold. If you had to run there, flee a car, flee a home, and it's the middle of winter, you'd have a warm refuge to do that, which we don't have now. So this would be some years before we actually have a staff person sitting at the desk back there, but it will be within the lifespan of this facility. So what would happen is what happens to a large degree today because nobody knows where the police department is. They'll come in the front door of City Hall. There'll be Steph at the front counter. Steph will say, why don't you get, may I have your chair in the hallway? I'll call for an officer. In this case, she might say, please go back and sit in the police department lobby. There'll be an officer. They'll come in through the back door, and then they'll come up through the door and take me into the soft interview room and talk to you in, in the lobby. But eventually, we will have a staff person that will be sitting there that they can go back and talk to there.
Uh, one of the other features that we looked at too was just, speaking of entries, was this back side entry wait, right here that we incorporated in so that staff parking behind the building still can get access into City Hall. Uh, cause currently that is right here. So staff will walk around through that side door and have access in and into the facility without having to traipse through the uh police department. Um, again, further down the road, but when that is staffed full-time or even part-time, uh, it's adjacent to the chief's office. So a good communication there. Um, we have a couple of future offices for uh an investigator who needs a private office for uh, for obvious reasons. And then uh some future uh um patrol office um workstations uh for a sergeant patrol, that kind of thing, if that's in the future as well. Um, we, we accommodated six workstations and that, they can double up to uh even triple up. Six, six times three, eighteen officers there. Um, so, and also sharing with the county and the state. Uh, they have, they'll have a workstation here. Um, in this area, in this zone here, we're looking at a roll-call area that can also double as a classroom for training purposes. So these, these um tables will be able to rearrange for either conference style or for classroom training as well. And then a small copy uh work center area here uh centralized in this office space. So this is really the open office, uh, excuse me, the uh front, front office kind of uh uh spaces. The rest of the bill, administrative spaces, thank you. And the, the rest of the building is really more a back, a back-of-house, um, more industrial spaces, uh, spaces that are easier to clean and whatnot. So I've kind of described how somebody might enter the building through the existing City Hall. Now I'll talk about how an officer arrives to the site um and with a detainee or a arrestee or some, or somebody or coming on duty or off duty. They'll um be able to enter this building, this door right here to get in af, before and after shifts, come in, um, use the locker room, change. Um, showers are here, a couple of restrooms, and then grab their duty bags. Uh, that'll be here and then head out into their police uh patrol cars and then head out. Um, if they have a, a arrestee coming, um, they'll be able to use the garage as a Sallyport. Uh, put, uh, bring that detainee directly into uh, um, the arrestee area. Uh, do a DWI test if they need to or, or have an interview with them. And then they're not going into the rest of the facility again for safety reasons. Um, there's also a restroom uh adjacent to that that's um really a, you know, made of durable materials. Um, in case there's accidents or anything that needs to be cleaned up in that area. It is not a holding uh facility, but it's, it's isolated from the rest of the facility to keep uh the rest of the people out of the main, main area. Um, again, bringing evidence into the garage.
So as the council knows currently, we don't have those types of facilities. So if somebody brings a detainee into the police department, they're walking him down the full length of the building. They're setting him down in what would essentially be this area. And right now, if you talk to our officers, they'll tell you if there's somebody that seems calm, you'll put them at the desk across from you. If they don't seem calm, you'll put them across the room. But they're literally sitting right there with you, um, possibly handcuffed while they're doing all of their work. That creates a whole bunch of off-security issues. Let's say they need to go to the restroom, any number of other issues. They have to walk them up to the car because they have to keep them in the car if they're gonna be doing that. There's just a whole plethora of operational and officer safety issues with the current design, which was minimally functional for an interim period of time, but it really um needs to be addressed regardless of what facility we do.
Yeah, this was just a much improved operationally. Um, as well, if a state or county come and wanna use this facility as well, they can come in the side door or come in the garage as well and use that facility as well. Um, we did, we accommodate for gun cleaning and an armory area. Small place for, for that. Right now is woefully inadequate for that space as well. And then, oh, lastly, uh, evidence. Uh, evidence can be brought in through the squad uh directly into the evidence processing area. Um, so saving trips through the rest of the facility. Again, that's for chain of custody rules and whatnot. So they'll bring in evidence, um, put it, uh, pack, package it up, process it, put it in this locker, pass-through locker. And then there, there's very limited access to the evidence uh storage itself. Um, that's isolated altogether. Again, trying to keep the shortest distance from evidence to storage uh as well.
Couple of other items I'm gonna point out. So as you know, our network server system is right behind that door and takes up a substantial part of our storage area. We're actually looking to move it back to the server storage area. So that would become the brains. So we can consolidate server operations we have over at the police department. Everything can be consolidated in that location. It'll be better designed and more appropriate for that particular use, and we'll have the climate control. So we'll be able to control humidity and temperature within that room to be optimal for the life and service of the equipment. Uh, we'll have an electrical room. The other thing is we'll have a stair access going up to the roof because the mechanic will be on the roof now. And he'll have stair access to it. And if the numbers pan out, potentially the solar array um under the same program that we did at the water treatment facility in the Public Works building.
Just wanna add too, in the data room, we're looking at a fire suppression system in there as well, just for that particular room.
One of the things that we probably should also point out, and I pointed out in the report, is this idea of remodeling the existing break room. So as we were going through the analysis, we took a look at the existing building and some of the impacts that would have with um this particular operation. One was the advantage of being able to relocate and establish a decent server room um as part of this project. The other thing that we looked at is, once the server room is back there, you're gonna have to reroute all of your small low voltage cables and everything associated with the facility. Um, we also um basically, cheese, cream, and cons, we need to review how we do the best to be able to provide for that after-hours service and communications. Because that does happen. People pull up. We have people have it now. Steph could tell you the number of times somebody pulled up, came to the front counter with some sort of a medical emergency looking for a police officer because this looked like an official city building, and they pull up and they're looking for help. So that would provide that. The other thing we have is glass in the kitchen. We, up until about a year ago, we had half, we've doubled the number of people who use in the kitchen now, and now we're gonna be doubling it even more than that with additional staff that are in here. Normally, that wouldn't be a big deal, except the existing kitchen right now is falling apart. When this building was built, they got donated cabinetry from some other business that had had them in their kitchen, and they went out of business. And they just took it and screwed it to the wall. All of the appliances are donated. They're functional, so we may have to replace those right away. But we need to rework that space. The other thing that happens is we have the Lions. They hold regular events here at this facility, and they utilize that kitchen. And it's woefully inadequate for those needs. And so this is an, uh, based on that, as part of the project, we are recommending that we go out with an alternate um for that space. Basically, we're saying, here's the base project, but give us numbers on this too. And then based on those numbers, you can decide whether or not it makes sense to, to do the project. And I'll talk about another alternate option here when we get towards the end of the presentation. Do you have any?
Uh, no, I think you covered it, Anna.
Any questions for Todd on the design?
Can't say enough though, just a compliment. That was brought to us. Not a ton of change. They know law enforcement. They know police departments and so many things we didn't even think about. They knew and were able to guide us through it. So it's a phenomenal plan that will be, the way they designed it, we can manipulate the stuff inside with the open design and make it last a super long time. Very long.
So the council recall, when we presented this concept, there's originally that range from one point nine up to two point eight million dollars, which is really big. And part of that And part of that range is we had two different estimators estimate the project. We had an outstate estimator who's a non-union shop versus a metro area union shop, do it, they work in different markets, so we got a wide range. What we did on that, for purposes of our financial analysis that we've worked it into, we've been working with the assumption of a $2 million project. We felt that it's likely that we'd be towards the lower end of that range based on who we're going to be able to get for contractors pulling from the south and west, more so than the big metro companies. Todd agreed with that, that our market would be a little bit, possibly a little bit different. As we went through and we updated, and we now had a detailed plan, we put it out for estimate again, the number we came back with was a little over $2 million. So it was right in that same ballpark. Now anytime you're doing an estimate, you're going out to an estimator and you're saying, okay, if you were doing the project, what would you charge? A couple of things to keep in mind. One, the estimator, when they're getting this, are usually getting levels of plans like you see there, they're usually not getting detailed construction plans at that time. We're still in the process of developing them, so they have to make some assumptions. So there's a little bit of variance that you're going to get naturally. Two, generally estimators are a little on the fat side. They don't want to be the lowest bidder on the project, otherwise you're not going to come back and use them as an estimator again, correct? So those are a couple of things to keep in mind. There's also a number of things when we're going through the estimate, Todd at this point has recommended a seven percent construction contingency. Anybody that's done construction knows that there's always something you didn't anticipate, didn't know, that comes up unexpected, and you need that contingency to cover that cost. So we currently have that. Now, when we actually get down to final bid, we may reduce that as there's uncertainty. You know, when we actually finance the project and what we consider to be the total project cost, once we have bids, that can be reduced significantly. But right now, at this point in the process, Todd's recommending seven percent, and I don't think that's unreasonable. A couple of things we noted from the previous change, one is we did add the kitchen alternative. That's estimated to be about $30,000. Whether or not that's actually what it is, we don't know. You don't know until you actually get bids. That's something we can kill if we need to, based on how the total project comes in. The other thing we did is we kind of changed the scope of the work for the renovation work over at the PD. The original concept and the numbers we've mentioned previously is that you're basically, we were going to gut it all the way out to the walls, do the structural work, and basically fully set the plate for a future renovation into its ultimate use. After further discussions, feedback from Cory, from the chief, from Todd, ultimately what we decided to do is leave the existing walls and the interior in place, just deal with the things we had to, the mold, the structural issues, et cetera. So we minimized the project. Cory feels that with no specific timeline, if we want to demo the walls, the Public Works guys can go in and demo walls, and then we're not paying for that externally, and it can be done on an as-needed basis. So doing that, reduced that cost, remember, it was originally 238,000 was the estimate, we're down to like 163, so that has reduced that cost significantly. The other thing is that the project did increase in size. So when we asked Todd to give us a conceptual, a concept in an estimate, it was pretty high level, and he had a short period of time to swig something out. When we actually got in design, it got about 700 feet larger, and so there's a corresponding cost to that on a per square foot basis. But at the end of the day, we ended up at around $2 million with overhead related to design, et cetera, for insurance fixtures and the actual construction of the project. So we're in the ballpark that we were estimating, so that made us feel good. But no construction project is without surprises. So one of the things that was running parallel to the design was the soil borings on the site. In an ideal world, you would do the soil borings well in advance of the project, but as you know, we're trying to get this project underway this year. But the bigger issue is we need to have this running concurrent with our other projects that we're trying to finance. And so if we were to wait fully for soil borings, we would have to delay the project a full month, and things are going to not line up anymore. So we ran the soil borings. We weren't anticipating any significant issues related to the soil borings. Well, guess what? We found out that soil borings indicate that there are significant soil corrections. I'm going to have Cory, who's the dirt guy, explain essentially what the borings showed.
Shows that when they originally put the fill on the site, they didn't remove any of the black dirt or any vegetation. So roughly 12 feet down, there's, Todd just told me about six feet of black dirt, so now you're 18 feet deep behind the building.
So when they built this building, just to give you an idea of where the city was at the time, the city of Newmarket built this building. At the time, the population was about 300. They had to get special legislation to just have the authority under state statute to even finance it. I mean, that's how big of a relative deal. So they did this building very cost-effectively, so they only did what they had to do. So when they did this, there was also no thought that there would ever be any future expansion of it. When they built this building back in 1996, the city was 300 people, it was not growing very fast, and the vision of the folks at that time, and I know because I've talked with them, because they're still on the council, involved in the city, when I came here, they had no idea, they'd never thought we'd be as big as we are today within a foreseeable future. So what happened there is, it's possible, if you thought about it, you could have done those corrections at the time, probably very cost-effectively, but now it's there and it's below grade.
So now you question, what's the issue with the project?
It's not bad.
It's weak.
It's just weak, just doesn't support.
Yep. So here's the issue. Where we're at now is, we didn't get that report until yesterday. So Todd, his office, has been scrambling, trying to analyze it and come up with some thoughts. And here's the reality, we don't know 100% at this point what the appropriate solution's going to be, we haven't had enough time to analyze it. And as a result, that range of number is a spitball that I had to twist Todd's arm to get.
I feel you're paying.
So we know that there's going to be a cost to it, it's not going to be a little bit, it's going to be a little bit more, but there's any number of variables that we still need to work through and potential solutions. So how to respond to that? Well, we would recommend making the renovation work at the existing police department an alternate, meaning that if we got into this, it gives us more flexibility, we could potentially not do that work at this time if we feel that the total budget with this and potentially how high the bids come in, we need to cut something. There is a risk to that though, because the existing building has issues, and if you choose not to do it at this time and kick the can, there's greater potential for deterioration of the building that exacerbates over time, and it may become more costly in the future, or you may lose the asset. There's a risk there. Now, by bidding as an estimate, you also get a defined number for it. So if they come back and say, yeah, we can do that for you for $30,000, oh, Christ, we could delay it right now, and we could pay cash $30,000 two, three years down the road, and it probably wouldn't hurt. So there's a benefit both from understanding the cost standpoint and giving us flexibility. We would recommend that you bid the project. Here's the reality, you can come up with all the estimates you want, and you don't know what the number's going to be. We bid a water treatment facility a number of years ago, and the prices jumped 20%, and it happened across the state, and it was unexpected, nobody saw it coming. We bid our paving project this last summer, and we came in 20% under. So you can come up with your best numbers, but it all depends on who bids, what the market is at the time, et cetera. If this project comes in, let's say $10, $12 per square foot under what the estimate is, you may offset this cost right there. However, on the flip side, if those dollars come in, $10, $20 per square foot above the estimate, we may be coming back just to have a discussion about how we respond to this. So we suggest bid the project, get your actual numbers, know what you're actually paying, and then we can make some decisions. We feel the first bullet point gives us a little more flexibility within that overall process. We'd have two alternates that we can cut out of the project if we felt we needed to, but we can take a look at what's the best decision based on the circumstances at that time, and then we make our decisions on the bids. Are there any questions?
So is it ask right now for us to upgrade just going up the bids?
Yes, basically, say we're okay with the plan, we presented it, go out, make any final tweaks, prepare the plans back single bid. So I put the timeline in your packet, but basically we've been looking at doing bids first week in February, with bids coming back late February or early March, and we'd be back at the meeting on 12th of March with the council saying, here's what the bids are with a recommendation at that time.
Counsel?
I say we just, just so we know what we're hoping to do.
Do you need a motion, or are you just looking for direction?
A motion would be best, and it would just be, it'd be...
Tom, are you looking to make a motion?
Sure.
Motion by C. Persad?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I'm just kidding, so 18 feet or 12 feet, what is ideal? What do we have, I mean, what is best practice or...
You could dig a hole 18 feet deep and then put the good stuff back, get rid of the bad stuff and fill the missing gap and recompact it. You could do some sort of piling or other foundation that pokes through the bad soil down to good soil. I don't know what...
We've limited looked at the geopark peers, and at least preliminarily, we didn't think that that was appropriate for this project, given the size of it and whatnot. We're calculating roughly 1,700 cubic yards of fill that would have to come back in.
So at the end of the day, we need to identify what the best solution or solutions are, and then we need to go to contractor and get updated numbers on that to give us an idea internally what we might be looking at. But regardless, the bid's going to be the bid, and so we still need to go out, but we might, but we use that information from talking to contractors, if there's options to identify one that might be more cost-effective than another, if that option exists.
Any further discussion or questions before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Let's go up for bids.
Thanks for illustrating the use of the word "pluggable," it means a lot.
All right, next item, authorized posting of planning commission vacancy. Appoint interview committee.
We have two planning commissioners and one parks commissioner whose terms expire on March 31st. As previously directed by the council, the council wanted us to advertise all vacancies or open positions regardless of whether the incumbent is seeking reappointment or not. So I'm asking the council to, or requesting the council to appoint an interview committee for both the parks and the planning commission.
Any volunteers?
I'm willing to do it.
I would be as well.
One council rep has been on the parks commission, another council rep has been on the planning commission. You can, one person could sit on both.
I think last time Kate said on both.
Or you have a...
Yes.
Okay, Kate for sure was the planning commission rep.
Kate did both last time.
You choose, you can have them both, you can have one, you can...
So we've done, we scheduled the interviews. It was a longer night, but we tried to do them all in.
Yeah, I'll take planning if you want to take parks. Does that run?
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay, it's fine.
That's it?
Fine, you're on it.
Easy enough, all right. Under reports.
Just to save typing time tomorrow, a couple of things this week. Renee has been off this week, so Haley has done an excellent job filling in in the meantime. We had a planning commission meeting last night where we talked about garbage cans and RVs. That item was moved out of the planning commission, so you will see that coming up next month on your council agenda. Long and short, overall, the regulations have loosened from what they are currently with regards to garbage cans. It will allow outdoor storage of the cans, but it'll have to be alongside or behind the garage. With regards to RVs, that loosened up substantially. Ultimately, what it'll be coming forward to is you will be allowed greater flexibility with regards to number and size of vehicles that you can park on your property as it relates to RVs. And ultimately, I think with regards to the RVs, they removed the size restriction, as long as you can fit it in your driveway without being in the wind or in the right of way. So they also made some changes with regards to the seasonal parking windows that were originally proposed to provide room for overlap, and recognizing that sometimes those seasons are a little bit, on both sides are a little bit longer. So the council will be seeing that. The other thing is that Scott County has a performance measurement program of sorts that they have in place where they go through and they talk about different departments, and they were giving a presentation to the board where, on basically roads within the county, and it basically consists of a panel of experts and a panel of their quality control, stats, operational, people that deal with the metrics within the organization, quizzing the people on the expert panel in front of the board, and then the board also asking questions. And my perspective on it is, one is to inform the board, but two is also to inform the community in general about what they've been doing. Interestingly enough, Elka Newmarket was asked to serve on the expert panel board for this county program. Originally, Renee was asked, obviously because of her transportation expertise, since she was out, I pinched hit on that. So that was, it was nice that we were considered, and it was interesting that the smallest city in the county was the one that was up there. It was in large part due to the roundabout project because roundabouts were a significant portion of that, of that discussion. Otherwise, we provide you with development updates on other items, and Renee has a number of items coming up under her report.
Any questions for Todd? All right. Public Works?
Nothing.
Okay. Police?
A new hired candidate has turned his background. We have three people working on the background to get him as soon as possible completed. He is also being back grounded by Carver County Sheriff's Department wants to hire him, so he's stated that he wants to come here, it's his preference, so we're putting it on super fast mode to get the background done, quality, but yet quick as well. We've never been able to put three people on it, we've never had that capacity before, so I'm really excited. We're still targeting beginning of March to get him trained in. So other than that, if you don't have any questions about the new PD stuff, that could be my report.
No report for fire and cement? Engineering?
I just got an email from our transportation people that Excel Energy's lighting cost for the decorative lighting company is about 45 grand less for the plug-in option that we prefer than we had estimated, so...
That's a win.
There's that.
That's a great report. Good job. Community development?
Did you need the projector? I could shut off.
I don't think so. I didn't have anything prepared. The first report that was, is on the agenda is the 2019 building permit review report. To note is that we're down a fair bit in housing unit starts from last year to this year. We had 31 last year and 10 this year. We have been, we like to say, we hope it's because the lack of lots that we've had up to this point, and next year, I'm hoping that will, that will tell with the new submissions coming online. We had an extreme amount of reroof permits in the community, so building permit revenues were up a little bit actually based on, based on that.
Was that the, was it like 471 or something permits? I mean, was it the vast majority of that roofs?
The vast majority of the reroofs are residing.
Inciting.
And over three hundred. Some reroofs, 369 reroofs and residing permits, most due to the June 4th hail event. I felt it was important to, moving on to... Does anybody have any question about the building permit report? Okay. Moving on to the planning commission year-end review, I thought it was important that, for the planning commission and council to note the, you know, achievements or accomplishments of the planning commission, so really continuous review of city ordinances, I think is important. It's our goal to kind of simplify the ordinances, make them easier to understand, easier to enforce. So there were a number of ordinance amendments that were actually adopted, a couple that were reviewed, such as, you know, medical cannabis, marijuana, that were just reviewed and put on hold. A number of developments were reviewed or reviewed and approved, new Platts, and then other projects were the Edelman, AUAAR, and the 2040 Conference of Clans, so.
I thought that was great. So thank you.
Next, the report is the 2020 Planning Commission Goals and Priorities. So there is a memorandum, which is from last night's meeting included, and really just continued review and simplification of the city's
and simplification of the city zoning ordinance. Education regarding housing and housing affordability and diversity, uh, is on our list to review with the planning commission and city council. And then final adoption of the 2040 count plan and the Edelman A U R were the, uh, items that, that were actually adopted by the planning commission as goals. And then we updated the 20, the vacant lot inventory, and that is up on the website if anybody refers to that. Um, it's quite different than last year. We currently have 193 vacant, uh, residential lots available. 103 of those are single-family, and 90 are, would be part of a townhouse development, either single detached townhouse or attached townhouse. Most of them are almost ready, uh, for construction, with the exception of, um, Pete's Hill, which they're very aggressive, uh, i- in that development, so we have no doubt that they'll be online in the spring also, so.
How does that compare to previous years?
Vastly different after last. Previously, there were like 20. And a lot of the, and some of those were not even available for sale.
We were down to the bottom of the barrels with the plan.
Let's create the inventory staff, you guys have done a great job, so.
Um, so we really hope that next year, we're gonna have a much different scenario. Uh, we also have received word that, um, a new, we have an application for a new plat that will be submitted for the next planning commission meeting in February. So that is a potential 30 additional lots. So, any questions about the inventory? Okay, uh, next on the reports is just to inform the city council that Scott County is working on a public health nuisance ordinance, and they're fashioning their ordinance after Carver County ordinance, which, uh, current, currently, the communities in Scott County and the townships, there are some limitations to enforcement of things such as garbage houses, meth houses, uh, giving us the authority to, to inspect those, uh, types of houses. So, uh, we intend to go to a county board workshop, um, in early February to show our support of that ordinance. Um, following adoption, if it does get adopted, which we anticipate by Scott County, we would, uh, anticipate, um, adopting some type of mirror image and appointing Scott County Public Health as our public health agency. And Brady can probably, he's familiar with working.
Until we got that in Carver County and in Chaska, it was super hard to clean up hoarding houses, seeing these deplorable conditions people were living in, and we had nothing to, no way to make it happen. And, uh, when that passed, and then I was able to get EPA in one house because they changed the oil and just let it run right next to a creek, um, until they passed that, we had no teeth to do anything to get these people help that they need and get them out of these houses.
So Brady's familiar with this, uh, the ordinance that's being proposed is based on the Carver County ordinance, which Brady has experience with, and he said that it's been, yeah, it's a good basis.
Some pretty strong opposition, because when you think about it in a rural setting and some of the agricultural deals where it's not, you're not gonna use it for that. You're using it for your people and these deplorable conditions. Uh, believe me, it's still difficult, it still takes a lot of people power to get it done. But before that, you know, meth labs, you just couldn't do anything with these homes. And that's where I think it's unfounded, I understand it, the concern, but it's, it's a tool to help people need not to overreach and cast a blanket on farmland.
I think that, um, Andrea and Tom can probably speak more to it, but we had a situation in our community, which was a garbage house, uh, which actually took significant city resources and a court order for us to be able to clean it up. And if an ordinance like this was in place, it would've been much more efficient.
Or working in the street, you're familiar with this, with us, year and a-
Yeah.
I was gonna say two, but that's-
Almost three years to, to get to the point where we could clean the property up, um, because of the hoops, the, the court process we had to go through. This would significantly, it still takes a while, but it would remove some of those barriers by giving you a more efficient process. And the issue here, and Brady touched on it, is usually when you're dealing with these houses, there's somebody that's living in these conditions, and a lot of times it involves vulnerable adults, children, and other people. So through this process, not only do you get the public health issue taken care of, but usually you get those people connected with the resources they need to address other issues as well.
All right. Any questions?
Uh, and then there were community note and updates, so if you have any questions, um, I'm not bad.
Any public details on anything going into the second half of the business thing? Any, any, uh, any businesses lined up, or, I mean, there's rumors of the different things of whatever.
We have been, uh, absolutely told by the owner of the property, the owner representative, that they have leases lined up for a coffee shop, a pharmacy.
A smoothie shop, one of those health food smoothie shops, for certain, although we have not received, uh, permit applications for the interior finishes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, parks minutes, we're in the packet. C C E C, anything going on? That's right around the corner?
Yeah.
All right.
Just trying to talk to my son and, uh, get my costume on again.
My son might do it.
Yeah. We got busted out last time, a couple nights.
Yeah, well, if you're looking for a teenage-
He got arrested.
Okay. Moving on, other, uh, other committee board reports. Scale is not for another cup, well, I guess, yeah, not for another couple weeks. Executive Committee, not for a little bit still, service delivery. Uh, we still, we never put anyone on the unified transit plan, do we?
Um, no, I-
Okay.
I'll be attending as I'm available, too, in the interim. I guess the question is, on that particular item, they're really looking for an elected official, but I don't think they would argue if you wanted to put a staff person on it. So if you guys wanna think about it, we can place an appointment discussion item on the next agenda. Or if you just wanna say staff take care of it, then we'll take care of it.
Anyone have a big opinion? I don't either.
Anybody really, really wanna do it?
No. All right, M V T A, we're gonna keep moving.
So actually, please, Tom, but I just, it was next Wednesday, I think it'll be the, my first meeting.
Yeah, I just wanna say, okay. I 35, a couple weeks. Chamber of Commerce, we already had, so discussion by council.
Got denied again by Metro Cities for board appointments, so I'll get to try it again in a couple months.
Is there things we can do to kinda grease the wheels for you a little bit or something?
Is that the second time now?
Way, way more than- Are they giving you, like, explanations or?
And, and the people that are pointing makes sense, so we'll just keep, we'll keep, uh, I'm not going away, so.
Good.
It's persuaded me to try it again.
Anyone else have anything?
Who do we need to know to, 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 yeah?
We're, we're working on it. What did they draw?
Anyone else have anything? Any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Berg. Second by Novak. Call in favor? Aye.